Welcome back, this is Circuits Part 2 of 2. This is a review video. If you have never learned this stuff before, this video is not for you. This is meant to be a review of stuff that you already know. If you want to watch some more basic videos, you can go to YouTube and Mr. Hicks Physics. And you can watch some of my videos like Intro to Circuits. And there's a couple ones they'll teach you about resistance, current, and voltage and all that, the very basics. So look those up if you want some more basic stuff. This particular video, what we're going to go over is a lot of capacitance. Putting capacitors into circuits and how to deal with equivalent capacitance and all that. We're also going to do some more stuff with resistance and basic current and all that. We will also throw meters into the mix this time. Where do you place an amp meter? Where do you place a volt meter? Alright, we'll start with equivalent capacitance. If we've got a circuit, say like these, how do we figure out the total capacitance of those circuits? And it's really easy. You already know the rules for resistors. For capacitors, it's the opposite. Okay, so we know that for series resistors, don't they just add up R1 plus R2, etc.? For capacitors, it's the opposite. So if I want the total capacitance, I could put C T or C equivalent. Okay, for series, I've got to do 1 over C1 plus 1 over C2. And so on, for as many capacitors as I have. Alright, now for parallel, it's very easy. C total or C equivalent for the circuit is just C1 plus C2. And so on, for as many as we have. Okay, so just remember opposite of resistors. Okay, now what if we put a capacitor in series with a resistor? This is a basic RC circuit. When we close this switch, if we've got a 10 volt battery, what's going to happen immediately after the switch is closed is this is just going to act like a wire. Okay, it's going to almost be like it's not even there. But eventually, this capacitor is actually going to reach 10 volts. Okay, after fully charged. Okay, and then no more current's going to flow. Once this reaches 10 volts, no current's going to flow through this resistor anymore. Okay, so there's some basic, some really important times that were asked about a lot on AP test with this. And here they are, immediately after the switch is closed. We already said that this acts just like a wire at that point. So this resistor is actually going to get the full 10 volts for a little while. But there's an important graph. And this is voltage versus time. And it looks like this. Okay, the voltage for the capacitor is going to start off at zero. And it's going to very quickly increase. And then it's going to level off like this. And eventually reach the 10 volts. Okay, and that's the charging curve, that's as it's charging up. Okay, and it is going to reach the full voltage after a long time. So this graph actually applies to both of these. Okay, so immediately after closed and then after a long time. Okay, so it's going to reach the full voltage. Alright, so let's put down here. Same as battery. And then here's the other important thing, no current flows. Okay, now up here, we're going to have 0 volts to start. And we're going to have the, I'm going to call it the full current. Okay, which would depend on that resistor's value basically. Okay, those are the two important times. We don't really get into, you know, finding an equation for that graph or anything like that. We basically care about this point and this point in physics too. In your next physics course, they might get into that. Let's go over our capacitance equations. Switch up some colors, make it interesting. Okay, so here they are. We already went over these on the top. That's how you get equivalent capacitance. So this is how the AP Equations page lists them. Here are other equations that we use for capacitors. This, we use a lot in the electrostatics unit. But it comes in handy sometimes with circuits as well. It relates the voltage and the separation of the plates to E field. Okay, there's a couple different ways we can get the capacitance for a capacitor. One is to know the charge and the voltage. Okay, so we've got on our equations page, it looks like this. Let's rearrange it so it's for capacitance. So capacitance is equal to charge over delta V. Okay, the difference in the voltage between the plates. Alright, so we'd now have to know the Coulombs present and we'd have to know the voltage. And that will get us a capacitance in Farad's, remember. Okay, but we don't always know the charge. The voltage is pretty easy to find, but we don't always know the charge. So sometimes we have to know about the capacitor itself. So this equation right here, let's talk about each part. K is the dielectric constant, okay? And that is a materials property. So it depends on what the capacitor is made up of. And let's just draw a simple capacitor. Here's a wire. Here's a plate. Here's another plate. Here's a wire. And let's say the top plate charges up positive. And the bottom plate charges up negative. The dielectric is what is in between. And depending on what it is made up of, it will increase or decrease the capacitance. And that's usually something that we are given. It'll be a constant that we find for a certain material. Then we've got epsilon naught. That is right here, vacuum permittivity, and we use that for a few different situations. And we've got its units and you can always look that up. And then we have area of the plates over distance between the plates. So a bigger area plate in meters squared is going to give us a bigger capacity, right? It's just like a room. Okay, a bigger room can hold more people. Okay, and then the distance between the plates right here will affect the capacitance as well. Okay, so a greater distance, if we increase this, we spread these plates out, will actually make the capacitance go down. If we press them together, the capacitance will go up. And that's because these charges like each other. The closer we put these together, the more these negatives will want to come over here and be with the positives. Alright, there's simply more attraction. So we can cram more negatives which don't like each other together in the same place if we decrease that distance and put them closer to the positives. Alright, so we need to know especially how these affect this and why. Okay, other capacitance stuff. Let's say we're asked about energy. Say we're asked about joules stored on a capacitor. Here's what we do. We just simply look these equations up. We don't need to memorize them. If we know the charge and the voltage, we can get the joules of storage. Or if we know the capacitance in Farad's and the voltage, we can get the energy. And that might be important for, say, a camera flash. We might need to know how many joules are available to us to run a certain flashbulb or something like that. And so we can get the potential when these things are charged up and then see how much energy is available. Okay, last equation relates this back to E field. If we know the charge on the plates and the area, we can find the E field. Okay, this and this can be used in conjunction with each other because we can set them equal. Alright, and then if we know the separation and all that, we can deal with any of those variables by going through E field. So this kind of relates it back to our electrostatics unit and connects things back together. Let's work some problems here that deal with what we just learned. Okay, set a timer for six minutes. Phone, desktop of your computer, whatever. Alright, pause the video and work on your own on this section. Just these three multiple choices. Okay, go. Alright, let's see how we did. Number one, we're going to close the switch. What's the current through R1? Okay, so this is a time equals zero situation. Remember that at time equals zero, this capacitor acts just like a wire. So in effect, there is zero resistance right here for a split second time equals zero. So that means that all the current's going to go through R2. Or sorry, no current is going to go through R2. All of the current's going to go through the capacitor. So R1 is not sharing any of the voltage with R2 because no current is going that way. So we can use Ohm's Law here. Current is equal to voltage over resistance. And the voltage is the total, or the voltage of the battery. And the resistance is R1's resistance. Okay, so the answer is C. Alright. Okay, number two, what is the charge on the capacitor after a long time has passed? Well, a couple things we know. We're at steady state, okay? This thing is fully charged. And we also know that since this is in parallel with R2, they are going to have the same voltage. Okay, so we're going to end up using this equation here because we want the charge. So let's start out with that. Charge is equal to capacitance times the voltage. And the capacitance is just C, so we'll leave that alone. Now what's the voltage that this gets after this is closed for a long time? Okay, well, we've got these two in series right here with each other. And this right here, this parallel section, we know that this has got the same voltage as R2. Okay, now since it's fully charged, we can kind of look at just the resistors for a second. These series resistors here are going to split that voltage evenly. So if this is 12 volts, they're each going to get 6. This is going to have the same voltage as that. So what ends up happening is this has got half the voltage. Half VO, this has got half VO. So the capacitor's also going to get half VO. So I'm going to put times one-half VO. And that's the answer. So that's answer B right there. Alright, last one. What will be the initial current through R2? Okay, so the initial current through R2, after a long time, we're going to open the switch now. Okay, so what happens when we open the switch is this part of the circuit over here doesn't even matter anymore. Okay, there's a broken circuit right there. So this is our new circuit right here. We want the current. We're going to use Ohm's Law. Okay, and we know that this, we know the voltage right here is one-half VO. Alright, so when we close the circuit, that's going to discharge through this resistor. And so we're going to put one-half VO right here. And then the resistance is just the resistance of R2, which is simply R. Alright, now if we simplify that fraction down, we can get our answer like that. Alright, and that would be B. Okay, so hopefully those multiple choice questions kind of helped us see where we use some of this stuff and see how an RC circuit works. Next page. This is a typical and pretty reasonable FRQ. This is actually pretty easy. This is a Physics B question. But I think it's got a lot of good things we can go over right here. So we're going to have to determine the reading on the volt meter here in Part A. And what's happening in Part A is S3 is open. So in other words, we really don't have to deal with the capacitor in this part. We basically just have to find the voltage of this resistor right here. So let's do that. Ignore the capacitor. This is all we've got going on here. And I want you guys to work that on your own, actually. We'll pause it here in a second. But let me also have you work this on your own as well. And in this part, these switches are open and this is closed. So in Part B, what you're going to do is you're going to ignore that. And this is your circuit right here. Okay, so hopefully that gets you started. Work this problem on your own and then we'll go over it together. And why don't you give yourselves, let's go 10 minutes. Okay, so pause it for 10 minutes and work as much of this as you can. Alright, let's go over it. Okay, so we're going to start with that closed off. What we're going to have to do to get that voltage is find the current through this. We need to find I right there. Alright, now that's tricky because we don't know the value of these resistors. So we're going to have to leave them as variables. Let's get the equivalent resistance of the circuit. And then we can find the current right here. Okay, so let's deal with the parallel part first. 1 over the R equivalent is equal to 1 over R plus 1 over R. Now that equals 2 over R. So our R equivalent is equal to R over 2, or the inverse of that. Okay, so that was just the parallel part. Now let's add on the series here. So R equivalent for the full circuit, okay, I'll put down here. For the full circuit is equal to R over 2 plus R. Alright, and if we do the math for that, that is going to be 3 halves R. Okay, this is the total resistance for the entire circuit. Alright, now that I have that, I can do Ohm's Law. Okay, this is kind of like Part 2. So Ohm's Law, current equals voltage over resistance. What I can do is plug in my 30 volts and then my 3 halves R. And that's going to get me the full current for the circuit. Okay, if we do the math on that, the 2's going to flip up to the top, then we're going to divide by 3 and we're going to get 20 over R. And that's going to be my amps. Okay, alright, now since I've got the current through here, I just found that, I can find this voltage. Okay, so I'm going to have to do Ohm's Law again. This is kind of Part 3. So Ohm's Law for just that resistor, I'm going to do V equals I times R. Okay, and here is where the Rs are going to cancel. So I've got 20 over R. It's going to get the full current. And then the resistance of just this one is R. The Rs cancel and I get a voltage of 20 volts. Okay, tricky problem because we didn't know the value of R. Now, here's another way you could do this. You could also make up values for R. You could call them all 5 ohms. You could call them all 1 ohms. You could call them all whatever you want. And you would still get that answer. Okay, so kind of tricky there. Part B. We're going to open these switches and now we just have a resistor and a capacitor. Okay, and determine the charge on the capacitor after it's been open for a really long time. Okay, a really long time. What's going to happen is this is going to charge up to the voltage of the battery. There's no branches here, so this is going to end up getting 30 volts for Part B. And after we realize that, it's really pretty simple. We want the charge, we're going to do capacitance times voltage. Okay, so capacitance is 1 times 10 to the negative ninth. The voltage is 30. And that's the toughest part of this is just realizing that it's going to get the voltage of the battery. And 3 times 10 to the negative eighth Coulombs is the answer. Okay, alright, and that's the full Part A and B there. Just realize that on Part B here, if these switches are closed, it's not going to get the full 30 volts. It's going to get the same voltage as these. And that's actually what we did in that multiple choice question. But if there's no branches, okay, these are out of the circuit, then it is going to charge up to the full voltage of the battery. That's very important to realize. Okay, you guys have been working hard. It's the time in the video for Name That 90's Song. Can you name this song, artist and song? Okay, that's an easy one. Hopefully you get it. Your teacher might give you like extra credit or something for that. I don't know. Let's do some ranking tasks here that have to do with capacitors. These two are really, really good. If you can understand both of these fully, then you are pretty much good with capacitors. These pretty much go over everything you need to know. So why don't you pause it for a second and write down these notes that I put here and then I'll explain them. Okay, here's what these mean. Well, let's look at the ranking task first. It says, rank these in terms of the charge stored on each capacitor. So we want them ranked from the largest charge to the smallest charge or Q value. Alright. Okay, so you already know this. You already know that for capacitors in parallel, if you want the capacitance total, we wrote this on the other side, you just add them up. Okay, that's review. We already went over that one. For series, if we want the total capacitance, we have to do that fraction thing. 1 over C1 plus 1 over C2, etc. Okay, and we're actually not going to need those rules here, but just a good example. I would simply just add these up to 6 if I wanted the total capacitance. These I'd have to work a little harder and do the fraction math there. Okay, but we want the charge. For series, real easy, the charge is actually the same for each. For parallel, the total charge is equal to the charge on that plus the charge on that plus the charge on that. Alright, a little more complicated. The voltage for series, let's say this is a 12 volt battery. They have to share all the voltage, okay? So it's going to add up, alright, but it's actually not going to add up evenly. We'll find out in just a second. For parallel, it is very, very simple. If this is 12 volts, what happens here is the voltage for each of these is the same as the voltage of the battery. So these are actually going to get 12 volts. Okay, now to finish this ranking task, I'm going to throw this out. Charge equals CV. Okay, and that applies to both sides here. Alright, voltage times capacitance. So here's what you should do. Work this one and this one on your own and then we'll go over it. Okay, let's see how we did. Alright, now A, B, and C have equal. Okay, so they're going to be on the same line together. Alright, and we know that from just this simple series rule. Okay, now the parallel, they are not going to be equal. Let's look at this equation. For each one, they have a different capacitance, but they all have the same voltage. So here, the ones with the biggest capacitance, alright, that I'm plugging in here, are going to have the most charge. Okay, so we're going to rank these D, E, F. Okay, and so it's actually, the answer's going to go like this. D is the largest, E, then F, and then A, B, C are on the same line. Okay, now how did I know that these were smaller than these three? Okay, let's go over that for a second. These all got the full 12 volts. These right here had to split up the voltages. Okay, so they're not getting as many volts for the same amount of, for the same amount of capacitance. So I'm still plugging in 1, 2, and 3 over here, but these are going to split up that voltage. Okay, so since they don't get the full voltage, they are going to be lower down here. Okay, alright, that's the answer. Let's go on to this one. Okay, so we've got some parallel and some series here. I'm going to circle the ones that are getting the full voltage. Okay, and that would be these right here. Okay, those are all kind of grouped together. Alright, and here, what we want to do is I'm going to put the letters next to these. We only care about the voltage for that capacitor. We only care about the voltage for that capacitor that's labeled X. Okay, we've got to rank the largest voltage and the smallest voltage. Okay, so let's say our battery is 12 volts. We know that C, D, and E are going to get the full 12 volts. Okay, because they are all in parallel with the battery. So C, D, and E are all gonna go on the same line. Okay? Alright, then A, B, and F, they're gonna, the, the voltage is gonna get divided up there. Okay, now here, these, these capacitors are all the same. So here, since they're the same capacitance, they're each gonna get 6 volts if I have 12's here. Doesn't matter what order they come in. So those are gonna be next. And then this one right here, we're dividing it up three times. Okay, so capacitor in part F is gonna be on its own down there. Okay, and you could explain that, I didn't really use, I didn't really give you room to do that, okay? You don't have to write it out, maybe your teacher wants you to write it out. Alright, but I'm not gonna take time to do that right here. Something that will be on your AP test for sure is meters. How to use them, where to place them, and you've used these in lab. You know, you need to know how to explain this on paper. Okay, so an amp meter in a circuit diagram is a circle with an A, that is reading current. Okay, measuring current. These operate at low resistance. Okay, and they are placed in series with the component Okay, with the component you want to measure current for. Okay, so let's say I wanna measure the current in R1. What I would do is I'd draw a circle and put an A in it. Okay, and that's gonna measure, excuse me, the current through R1. I could also put an amp meter right there. Alright, that would measure the current through R1 as well. Doesn't matter if it's before or after it, which way the battery's turned. I could put a, an amp meter right here, right here, right here, okay? Any place in this circuit where there's not a branch and that would measure the current through R1. If I want the current through R2, I'd put the amp meter here or here. Alright, but we never place these in parallel. We might place them on a parallel branch, but we're not gonna draw another branch and put them in parallel. Okay, that's what you need to know about an amp meter. Alright, now volt meter. Circle with a V. Okay, and I'm gonna put little legs on it like that to remind us that we need to place it in parallel. Okay. Measures voltage. Alright, it operates at high resistance. Okay? Alright, and it is placed in parallel. Okay, with the component you wanna measure voltage for, alright, we won't write that out. So let's say I wanna measure the voltage for R3. Here's how I would diagram that. I'd put a volt meter there and it's in parallel. If I want the voltage of this, I'm not going to put it right there. Okay, I'm going to go like this and put a volt meter like that. That's how you tap a volt meter in. Okay, now let's talk about resistance for a second. This has to operate at low resistance because if this operates at high resistance, then it's gonna decrease the current in the circuit and change what the circuit's doing. Okay, we want this to measure, not change the circuit. Okay, similarly, if this, this has to operate at high resistance because it's in parallel. If this is at low resistance, then the current's gonna wanna go this way. Alright, and that's gonna change our circuit as well. So we operate these at very high resistance and that way it doesn't affect the circuit. Okay? Alright, so you need to know how to draw those in diagrams. And we'll do that in this problem right here. So I want you to read this problem very carefully, you might read it a couple of times. And this is a great example of an LBQ, a lab-based question. Okay? And they are going to have you design a circuit in this that does what you want it to do. Okay, and you have certain supplies available to you and you have to design it. So go ahead and do that, design the circuit and show all of the work you need to, to make your circuit work. Pause and do that on your own and then I'll show you how to do it. Okay, not, not a super easy question here. We have this motor that we wanna operate. Okay, and I'm just gonna draw that as a resistor like this. And the deal is, the motor needs to operate at 1 milliamp and 3 volts. Okay, but we have a 9 volt battery. Okay? So that's the problem, we have 9 volts, but we need the motor to operate at 3. Okay, so what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to put a resistor in our circuit that uses up some of that voltage. Okay? Alright, so here, here's the circuit you should have drawn. Okay, this is the motor. This is a resistor. Okay, and what we need is for this to take 6 of the volts. Okay, this is our 9 volt battery. This has gotta have a 6 volt drop and this is half, has to have a 3 volt drop. Okay, so we need to figure out what resistance we need to make that happen. Alright? And we're gonna have to use Ohm's law. So for this, we need 6 volt drop. Okay? And let's figure out what resistance we're gonna need. So we know V equals IR. And we're gonna solve for resistance. So our resistance is gonna be our voltage over our current. Okay, and we need a 6 volt drop over that resistor and we need the current to still be .001 or 1 milliamp. And the reason why is the current everywhere in this circuit has got to be the same for our motor to operate at this. Okay, so that resistance comes out to 6,000 ohms. Okay, so let's look up here, oh, we don't have a 6,000 ohm. We do have a 5,000 and a 1,000. Okay, so let's redraw our circuit here. And here's the motor. We'll label it. And this time we're also, this is kind of like our final circuit, we're also gonna draw the amp meter and the volt meter. Okay? So the volt meter for the motor is gonna be right here. And the amp meter can be anywhere. I'm gonna draw two resistors up here this time. And then I'm gonna draw my battery. Polarity can be either way, and I'm just gonna put my amp meter down here. Notice that is in series with the motor and the volt meter is in parallel with the motor. This is 9 volts. This right here is 1,000 ohms. This right here is 5,000 ohms. And that will be the complete circuit. You would get points for this. You'd get points for placing your meters correctly and you'd get points for having an all-series circuit. Okay, so that's a, this is a really good question. Look at it until it makes sense to you. And I hope you learned something from the Circuits 2 video. Thank you for watching.